So, where are we at in our agenda? Where? I know that Trustee Barry wants to make a statement.
Yes.
So, we should be at, right now, it's --
Superintendent Maliko.
I actually asked you, President Lane, I asked you if I can make my statement right after the oath, but you told me there was some children in the audience and you wanted to move them along.
Yes.
And I respected that. Then you end up doing the oath of office, and I respected that. But, I mean, I want to make a statement.
Okay, sure. Superintendent Maliko, we're going to jump out of order again.
Sure.
I'm sorry about that, but yes, I know, Trustee Barry, you did ask me, so thank you. Go ahead.
Yes. For Ms. Nasser, I mean, I've shared my personal feelings, that it had nothing to do with this whole process, my not engaging in the process had nothing to do with you or any of the other candidates. And I wanted to, I said that to you and your husband back at Biblos. I wanted to make that publicly, that that's how I felt, and that's the truth. It had nothing to do with you or any of the other candidates, I just had a problem with the process. I know we started the last meeting, that there's been some legal developments this past week, and I wanted to make a public statement here. If you can please pass those down to Dr. Maliko, please. Dr. Maliko, I mean, it's obvious what I have in front of me, right? I hope you know. Dr. Maliko?
Well, I don't know.
If he wants to finish reading, that's fine. We'll go over this in a second.
Sure.
But, I mean, can you tell me what I have, what we have in front of me here?
This?
This, right here, right here. These stacks of books, like, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Appears to be the board bylaws.
Yeah, they're the bylaws, okay? And there's like tens of thousands of policies and subpolicies and the whole nine yards, okay? Literally, and then there's another set at the college. For us to memorize everything in here is literally impossible, so we always lean on the professionals here, okay? And what I gave you a copy of is our, I don't think there's anything that's confidential here that you have in front of you, but these are copies of our board briefs. These are the board briefs of June 8th. These are the briefs that we get from you on Thursday, before, every Thursday. But these just happened to me, happened to me before the meeting of June 12th. We receive them late Thursday, some of us get to them on Friday, some of them get to us on Sunday, possibly Monday. I just want to read this. This came from you. It says, "An update on appointment of the board member to replace Trustee Bazey." It says, "President Lane and I met this morning and had a conference call with Dr. Wilmot to discuss the process that he will use to help appoint the new board trustee. This is a revised process that Dr. Wilmot sent to us per conversation/conference call with President Lane." And then you provided a link to that document. Next paragraph says, "In addition, we," being Dr., being President Lane and myself, "we spoke to Dr. Wilmot and MASP, the Michigan Association of School Boards, about the vote. And it was clearly sent to me in an email from you, and it was, I'm sure, every board member was copied. It says, 'A vote of four is necessary even if a trustee decides to recuse him or herself from the process. If the board does not appoint a trustee by June 21st, then the county will make that decision. I emailed Randy Lippa from Wayne Risa to find out the process for their board appointments.'" Then you provided a link that, you know, I opened up and I gave you a copy that clearly says that the board has to have, the new appointee has to have four votes even if a trustee decides to recuse. This is the last information I saw going into that meeting where I decided to abstain from the process, okay? My statement is today, and I was hoping I would get a chance to say it before the oath, but some of the things I'm going to have to scratch here. Last meeting, we started out that there's been some legal developments in this past week. I'm making a statement today that my lawyer today filed a lawsuit on my behalf. I served Secretary Petrokoff and President Lane with a hard copy, and I also emailed them early. As soon as I got an email, I forwarded that email to them. It is a very, very sad day that I had to file the suit in order to bring out how this process went down. I didn't have a choice. I did not want to do this. Definitely did not want to do this. In fact, my statement was going to go on before we move forward, let's revisit that vote. But we're past that now, since the oath is, and I respect that, the oath has been taken. This will eventually, I made it very, very clear to our attorney last week that this was his opinion, opinion only. I begged, I begged, I, I mean, as much as hard as I could to give us 24 hours, let us sort it out so we don't get into this mess, okay? I was willing to cancel the lawsuit if we were looked at taking another vote. There's also been, what I believe is violations of the Open Meetings Act, which my lawyer's still looking into. I want to make it very, very clear that I did not want this process to go down at this level. It's not because I didn't want to make a vote, it's not because I wasn't happy with the candidates, I just wanted to move it forward for what I believe that there was some violations of the Open Meetings Act. So, after reading this, and it says very, very clear here that this is the last, what I saw, this was, I didn't revisit my bylaws, we didn't have, you know, we didn't talk about anything, this is the last thing I saw before we went into that meeting, that the appointee needed four votes even though somebody abstained, okay? First of all, I'm going to hold on to what I said last week. I was not, there was two motions on June 12th that were voted on, I was not called upon to vote on them. Second, there was only three yes votes, and if our legal counsel considers my abstention, which I don't, you know, I didn't abstain from the vote, I was never called on to vote, but let's say I did abstain from my vote, that he claimed it would have been an automatic, automatic extension of the majority vote. We have seven elected board members, a majority of seven, easy arithmetic is four. At that meeting, we had six board member, members. A majority of the six board members is still four. Three out of six is not a majority vote. So for him to tell me that my abstention, which he perceives as my abstention from voting, I did not get called on to vote, goes with the majority, there was no majority in the first place. So again, to the taxpayers of Dearborn, to the constituents we serve, I think this, I think what just happened the last couple of weeks is a very, very sad day for our city, for our school district, and above all that, for the true meaning of democracy. So at this point, I will stand behind my lawsuit and will let a judge decide on this. Thank you, President Lane.
Okay, next item, then. Do you want to get back into order now?
Yep.
Superintendent's update.
Okay, so.
Agenda items.
Thank you. So, agenda items, the first thing, wanted to recognize some of the retirees, and we do that every month. Most of the, the large number came out at the last meeting, so we do have a few here. I want to recognize Mr. Michael Riggs for over 14 years of service. We also have Mr. Wyatt David with over 18 years of service, Susan Dobbs with 25 years of service, Lynette Gardner with 18 years of service, and we have Joanne Strez with over 27 years of service. So again, we thank all of them, and we appreciate their work and their support for students. And some of them I knew personally as I worked with them in Deval when I was principal. So congratulations to all of the retirees. Yes, thank you, thank you. So I also, on agenda items, this was already on the agenda, so I'm going to continue with it, just the graduation. I just want to read a, you know, congratulate all of our students. We had a great reception just before this with the Collegiate Academy students to recognize them. And again, you could see that, as they, we had a student that spoke, you know, we're expanding those programs, whether the early college or collegiate academy, where they can get, you know, they get two years of an associate's degree or college credit, up to two years, paid for by Dearborn schools. And so, we believe we're a state leader in that area, we want to continue to expand, and we're going to be expanding, you know, with the early college. So, we have, when I counted some of the early college, we had over 1,400 graduates in the district, we talked about the rates, but it was, you know, great. I appreciate all the trustees who were there. There was a lot going on, and your dedication is definitely admirable. And so, you know, I do want to just read a portion of the speech that I gave. I did tweak at the end some of the speeches that I gave with Etzel and others. We did try to, you saw the picture where we wanted to, you know, we're supporting the vision, and we had a plane fly over with the vision. Unfortunately, it only worked at Fortson because FAA wouldn't give us approval on the other two days to fly over because of the metro airport was too close. So, our plan was to give it to all three high schools, but at least we did, it did work out at Fortson. And then, since we didn't work that out at the others, I know we got a couple selfies and a few other things in the vision statements. I appreciate the trustees supporting that. So I just want to say, you know, it's been two years for me now as superintendent, and I'm very appreciative, you know, to be the superintendent, to work with the Board of Education, to work in this community. I really just, I sincerely mean that, you know, for me, there's been, this year, and I have personal record for me, but again, it's because I want to be with the students and in the instruction, over 400 school visits this year. Last year, I was 394, so that was in my goals to the board, that I would continue to be visible within the schools, and I will continue to do that. Again, I'd like to thank, you know, the Board of Education for their ongoing support and that the work that is taking in place in the classrooms throughout the district. We have a dynamic strategic plan, and the commitment of the board is unwavering and commendable. So thank you. I also want to acknowledge and thank our parents and family members for the love, care, and support that you've given your children, the graduates and not only that, but everyone going through the K-12 system. We have an outstanding staff, including teachers, support staff, and administration. And just so everyone is aware, this past Wednesday, we just had our administrative retreat, professional learning community, with staff members presenting. We had sessions, I was involved in some, we had principals involved, we had teachers involved, and it was leadership development, team building. Some of the team building actually involved water balloons, a tradition that actually started under Brian Wiston, but I got to tell you, we had some fun with the events, and that was what it was about. It was really about the positive team building. So I just want to say, you know, our perspectives on events, relationships, and surroundings can influence our overall attitude and behaviors. And I said this at the graduation of the students, and I truly believe, I really, truly believe this in my heart, I've always prided myself on taking the optimistic viewpoint where I see the glass half-full, always. I've talked to the staffs about this when I've given presentations. I just really refuse to look at the negative perspective. I choose to focus my time and energy on things that are within my control. When we face tougher adverse situations, I believe that we become stronger as a student, professional, and person for having experienced that challenge or adversity. And what I said to the students is that they had faced a similar journey in their four years of high school and even before that, in elementary and middle. But as we know, that also pertains to us as adults, and so for me, it's connecting with those students and taking, and we heard the positive here today, and they're appreciative, and I'm very proud of them, I really am, you know, for the great work they're doing, and everybody supporting them as a full school community. I'm going to share this story, which I know the trustees have heard it, and some of you have heard it, but some maybe in the audience haven't. You know, I'm reminded of the old story about the twin boys whose dad decided to play a joke on them on their birthday. The dad wrapped up two huge boxes of horse manure and presented them to his sons. The first boy opened the box and was immediately upset. He threw the box to the ground and walked away crying. The second boy opened his box and upon seeing it filled with the same contents began cheering and jumping up and down with excitement. When his dad asked him why he was so happy to get a box of manure, he looked at his dad and said, "Two full boxes of horse manure can only mean one thing: you finally bought us that pony we've been asking for." So again, two very different perspectives with two very different results. So I want to say, as educators, it's important that our perspective is always focused on providing our students with a meaningful education. Good educators will always go above and beyond the basic call of duty, whether it be a lesson helping their students or just growing the full potential of their students in class. Our new vision statement, which I know, and I have it here, we did have the graduates going all around, and I know the trustees have been in multiple photos with the vision statement, so I appreciate that support and that message, and we had the one on the plane on the blog. And so, our new vision statement was created by the community, it reminds us to have the right perspective, to always put students first, not just teach, but inspire, educate, and celebrate. So again, I'm proud of our graduates, the entire school district, this community, the greatest reward we can receive as educators and school stakeholders is the success of the students that we serve. It is so rewarding to run into successful graduates and former student professionals in the community. The Superintendent Honors Night is an example where students get to, students get to honor those who made a difference in their lives. And again, this is about positive relationships, which are the key to success of our students. And the rigor, the curriculum, and intensive academic standards, although very important, only complement, really, those positive relationships. So in closing, with this, with graduates, I know that the staff and students look forward to the summer break, sometimes I'm not sure who looks forward to it more. This break allows us a little bit of time to be with family, visit favorite destination, or just spend a few moments relaxing and enjoying our favorite pastime. So although many of us worked the entire year, we too will take advantage of the slower summer pace somewhat to enjoy some of the well-deserved vacation time. I hope all the trustees enjoy the vacation, I hope the families out in the community, you also enjoy the time with your families as well, because I do think that's very important. So, thank you, that's my statement on agenda items.
Any non-agenda items?
Yeah, I have a few, and I'll, just, I wanted to wish, and I did put out a communication on this on the blog, but, you know, Eid Mubarak, I just, all those that celebrate, I wish you and your families all the best during this holiday season, and again, communication, so thank the families and those who are celebrating the holiday. I want to, again, we had a reception for Marion Bazey, so I want to congratulate her, we just had it before, so congratulations on her appointment as judge, and congratulations to Celia Nasser on being appointed as the Board of Education. I also want to just mention a few updates, I think it's important that we do this in the meetings, and I did this last year. We did not have very many administrative reassignments. I know the board's aware of all the reassignments along with the appointments that the board has approved at the last meeting, but I just want to mention for the public, and we will have a communicate, we had a communication that went out. We have Dr. Joshua Tyne is going to be the principal at Nowland Elementary. We have Susan Nolan, who is moving as assistant principal at Smith Middle School. We have Mr. Sean Fisher, who is moving to the assistant principal at Woodworth. And we have Marion Kobesi, who's moving to assistant principal at the Henry for early colleges. We look to expand that program. Thank you, Mike. That means we have five administrative vacancies of assistant principal, and again, we are waiting, we've already done the administrative interviews, now we'll be going into the communities. We have McCullough, we have the following vacancies, McCullough, Eunice, Miller, Dearborn High, Fortson, and Etzel Ford. And I know HR is already getting those scheduled so that we can move, and then the plan would be to hopefully, if we're ready, to appoint them at the July 24th board meeting. And I know it is an action item to talk about the new schedule for the board. I do thank the board for their consideration of moving the July meeting back, because it's really more helpful to us for human resources and to get those principals in place and assistants, so they can actually start on time with, when the principals have to report back for work in August. So, again, appreciate that. And the only other thing I do want to mention is we, we had some, you know, again, I look at the glass half-full, always. We've been really trying to fight and work really positive with our representatives, Hamud, Senator Hood, Senator Kinesik, Representative Santana, Representative Jones, on getting the at-risk money back to Dearborn. We had that money from 2001 till about 2009, it was taken away in the budget cuts when Brian Wiston was superintendent. We've been working hard with the legislators to try to get it back. We did not get the full amount, but we did get 30%, so we are getting over $3.1 million scheduled to come back. So again, the glass half-full, that is a start, and because we are a hold-harmless district, that is going to help a lot of students. I also want to say Brian Wiston, I think, was helpful in that, and so again, I appreciate the support of the Board of Education, as that money will go to help our students.
Well, and also, Dr. Maliko, it's based on research that student, ELL students have significantly higher needs. So, yeah, we do appreciate it, of course, but that's the reason for it, it's based on research.
Question.
Yes.
You mentioned his name already, so I guess it's okay if I mention it. Did I miss something? You said Sean Fisher, assistant principal at Woodworth?
Yes, yes.
Assistant principal?
Yes, yes.
So now we have two assistant principals there?
Yes, yes. It's, it is in addition for this year's budget. There was a principal, had been there, that was cut several years ago, and then enrollment has really spiked at Woodworth, and the need has spiked there, so that was something we've been discussing.
I know the last time we spoke, it was a different title, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no.
Or I missed something.
Yeah, it has to be assistant principal, just because of the contract with the unions, so.
When was that? Was that sent out? Did we get those?
Yes.
Board briefs? Yeah, it was a board brief.
So I just had one other thing quickly, just, I just want to mention there was a national publication that went out, and it was called the, it was a study of the 300 large cities in the United States, and basically, it's called Great City Schools, and they sent us the article. They looked at the largest schools, and they have us as one of the top performing, when you take in demographics, including, you know, whether it be poverty or diversity levels. And so they had us up against, in order to qualify for the study, it would have to be districts that are above 16,700 students, and so we were, we're in the publication, actually rated in the top 10 based on the scores that they came up with. So again, we have different groups that are looking at, you know, the progress of the district, so I just wanted to mention that as well.
Great news. Okay.
Okay. Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by 7:10 p.m. by submitting a blue card to the secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible, the board president reserves the right to limit times. I have three blue cards.
I wanted to follow up on what Secretary Petrokoff said.
On the?
Yeah, on mentioning employees' names. I know last week, there was some mention of board members' names or have you, and you did a good job educating that person not to mention names, so. And when you address us, address, address the board and directly address your comments towards the, towards the chair. But I know on the June 12th meeting, there was somebody that turned around and addressed the audience, and created a bad environment for us, so that's not good. Then at June 19th meeting, one of his friends decided to, felt empowered that, to go ahead and say some nasty things to, and I have her permission to say her name, Ms. Nafaila Haydar. And we were all told what was said to Ms. Nafaila Haydar. And I don't believe anybody at this table reached out to her or checked on her, what have you. Nobody's daughter, nobody's mother should ever be treated the way this young lady was treated last week. She serves us in many capacities here, she serves on early childhood group, I don't remember the name of that group, she serves on some other committees. Most important role that she plays is, she's the council, PTA council president. Under her leadership, Ms. Nafaila Haydar, under her leadership the last couple of years, that, that group has just done some amazing things. So yes, freedom of speech allows her to tape a meeting, she has hundreds of her members that wanted to watch that movie, just, watched that meeting but couldn't make it. As she was taping, one of our community members said some nasty things to her, and instead of apologizing to her, he turned things around on her, said that she was bullying him. I think she's less than half his size, and for him to claim that she was bullying him, that was just so wrong. Then you know what? Maybe the heat of the moment, you say some things that you regret, but instead of apologizing, you go on social media and be very, very proud of what you said, and you answer somebody's comment by saying, "I told her what to do," that is so shameful. Here's somebody that serves us, and I think everybody at this table knows, especially Dr. Maliko, knows the capacity that she serves us. I really don't think, I may be mistaken, but I don't really think, we created that environment last week. I don't think anybody reached out to her, even to check on her. Again, that's somebody's mom, that's somebody's daughter. That was very, very, very nasty. So anybody comes up to the podium, please address the board, direct your comments directly at the board chair, and don't mention any of your names, please. Thank you.
Okay, our first speaker is Mr. Charles McDonald from Dearborn, wishes to speak about the process.
You invited the public to do their research, so I did my research. And I did research through the state law, the Board of Education, bylaws, and Roberts rules. The process to appoint the new trustee reeks of inappropriateness, sneakiness, and underhandedness. This is what my research has revealed. In the June 12th meeting, you agreed to have four votes to confirm an appointment. Did not happen. You had a roll call vote. Definition of a roll call vote, each member shall be called by name, state their vote, and their vote shall be recorded. This was also not done. The board decided to table the vote until the following meeting, June 19th meeting. I'm not sure, but I thought I heard a board member say that the board needed to rescind and amend the minutes from the meeting before. I don't know that for sure, because I couldn't get the June 19th meeting on YouTube. Definition of agenda, the board shall transact business according to the agenda submitted to all board members in advance to the meeting. Appointment confirmation and swearing-in was not on the agenda. A motion was made to table the appointment for one day. For further legal opinion and interpretation, that motion was not recognized. Appointee had a signed affidavit at the meeting. To my knowledge and my research, that has never been done, that an appointee that was appointed had a signed affidavit with them. Usually took a week. Board bylaws, your bylaws state any board member's decision to abstain, which is still in question, shall be recorded and be deemed to acquiesce in the action taken by the majority. Now, I'm just a dumb electrician, I'm not a lawyer, but there was no action taken on that day. You had a moral and ethical obligation to ensure public confidence of a fair process. This was sneaky, it was underhanded, and you have failed in your obligation. Once again, I'm just a dumb electrician, but optics seem to be apparent. This recent pattern and track record of this school board is a springboard for higher aspirations without fulfilling your full term and obligations to the community and the kids of our schools. So I'm going to go out on a limb here and predict, maybe one or more board members will either retire or resign before the end of their term, but not until a new president and boundary lines are decided for this district. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Mrs. Roxanne McDonald about the board appointment.
Yeah, that's a tough act to follow. President Lane, Dr. Maliko, and members of the board, I am compelled to address you today regarding the recent appointment to the board. I have nothing against her, and I am fine with not being a member of the board. There are many worthy causes to which I can devote my time and my energy. However, I'm not fine with our beloved schools being used for political games. On many occasions, this board has discussed the importance of good governance and to never have the slightest hint of any, of impropriety. But even before the appointment process began, several concerns were voiced, and it just seemed to escalate from there. But what occurred last Monday night was a travesty, and it tarnished the outstanding reputation of reputation of this wonderful district, and it most certainly was not an example of good Dearborn Public Schools has been a model for the state and for the nation, and as such, we are looked to as leaders in education and also leaders in best practices. For many years, DPS has had the core values of honesty, integrity, responsibility, citizenship, and respect for self and others, and as part of their criteria, or I'm sorry, it was part of their curricula. Are these just meaningless words that we put on a poster to display throughout the district? Or are they truly the beliefs that we hope to impart to our children? We can't just tell our children about these core values and expect them to embrace them and to live by them. We must demonstrate them daily in all that we do for them to truly have meaning. Although the Board does have the right to appoint whomever they wish, for some Board members, it seemed getting their preferred candidate seated and sworn in as quickly as possible on the date of last Monday's meeting seemed to take precedence over good governance, and that should never happen. Although it might be legal, that certainly doesn't make it ethical. And we set the example for our children. Thank you.
And the final speaker would be Mr. Abdallah Dari. I never get it right. Thanking Mr. Barry.
Good evening, Board members. Dr. Maleko, legendary Mr. Barry. I just wanted to come up here and personally thank you from the bottom of my heart for standing up for the truth and having the true values and morals that we all, regardless of our religion, ethnicity, or background, should have, just simply as being a human. As an aspiring activist, I truly do admire your drive and commitment to standing up for what is right. You have encouraged me to further pursue my goal of being an activist and becoming a voice for the voiceless. As a small token of my gratitude, I'd like to offer you this poster that I was, that I was told would be considered a disruption if I held it up during the meeting. Although I did look up the bylaws, it mentioned nothing about a poster, but I respectfully agreed not to hold it up. So thank you again for being such a role model to the youth and inspiring all of us. I hope I could present you with this poster, not breaking any laws. Is that okay?
It's got more hair than I really have. You gotta move on, you gotta move on, now you're distracted. Thank you. It's okay, thank you, thank you.